Go ahead, Perry.
Okay, I have seven PM and this is May the 24th. I'd like to begin our council meeting this evening. And begin, we'll have, if everybody's had a chance to read their minutes and operating statements from the previous meeting of April 26, we're in line for a motion to approve.
I make a motion that we approve April operating statement, April 26, 2021, public hearing minutes, April 26, 2021, council meeting minutes, May 10, 2021, work session minutes, and content financial statement for April 2021.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those say ayes or give me a thumbs up and. All right, motions carried. Okay, I'll begin my report. As you know, on May the 11th, 2021, the town of Union Bridge had their election for three council people. Elections were at seven that morning until eight that evening, and elections results are Laura Conaway received 80 votes, Amy Kalin received 60, Sherri Thompson received 62, Ellen Cutser received 50, Cherylane Johns received 31, one write-in vote for Ryan Ricketts, he received one, and the Board of Election Supervisors declared Laura Conaway, Amy Kalin, and Sherri Thompson as our winners for the May 11th election. And they were sworn in this afternoon at 5 o'clock at Union Bridge Town Office by me. They've signed their paperwork and committee appointments duties for this next couple of years will be. Assignments are Laura Conaway will be in charge of police, parking enforcement, the mowing, Christmas lights, and the banners that we have up on the streetlights on the poles. Sherri Thompson will be in charge of trash removal and streetlights. Amy Kalin will continue to be on the water and sewer and our liaison with the Planning and Zoning Commission. She's been on there for ever since she's been on the council and we're, a lot of stuff's going on with the planning and zoning right now, and I think she'll be great to stay there where she's at. So that was part of that. We also have last, last Thursday in Union Bridge, there was the Carroll County Chapter Meeting of the Carroll County Maryland Immiscible League, and it was held at the Flood Zone. That night, we recognized Neil Group for the great job he's done in Shaw, Mayor of Sykesville, he lost his election, and Ellen Cutser. We acknowledge Neil for the great work he's done for the chapter over the years. He was our Carroll County Chapter President or Carroll County Chapter President for two years. He served as chaplain for many years for that, and for the past year during COVID, he took care of getting the mayors together every week when COVID first started. We had a, the mayors got together for a mayor's meeting. It was virtual, and then as the summer went on, we went to a bi-weekly meeting, and then we went back to a monthly meeting. So that's just some of the things that was behind the scenes people didn't know. Ellen, we acknowledge her for the great work she's done for MML. She had served on the, well, started out as Communications Committee, and then it changed over to Outreach Committee, and they did a lot of work on that committee as far as getting the mayor, if I were mayor contest going every year and things like that. And so we acknowledge them for their hard work. Also, speaking of the mayor's contest, this year there was 1,200 applicants throughout the state of Maryland. The fourth graders that wrote an essay, If I Were a Mayor. And so they went down to 11 finalists, and Carroll County's person that won was from Mount Airy. So that's good to have somebody there. Unfortunately, we did not have a winner from Francis Kike this year, but Laura done a great job during the video and getting those people organized out there. So maybe one day we will have, next year we'll try a little harder, maybe we'll get somebody from Elmer Wolf to win. But that's pretty good for 1,200 fourth graders throughout the state of Maryland. Also, I must do it tomorrow, fell behind, have to do a video for the parade of flags for MML for the conference. We didn't have our flag because it was at the MML office in Annapolis until just recently. I picked it up, so I'll do that, and we'll send that video in to have that for the conference. Also, Tom Long would like to come off of the Disorderly House Abatement Committee. He said he had enough other things to do, especially with planning and zoning. And the ordinance says we have to have somebody that is a, just a citizens member. And being Ellen Cutser has worked on this thing very hard over the years. She knows about what's been going on there. I'd like to appoint Ellen Cutser as the citizen on the Disorderly House Abatement Committee. So I would like to have a motion to appoint her to that committee as a citizen member.
I'll make a motion that we. I'll second it.
Donald, you made the motion. Laura, second. Okay, is there any discussion on that motion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, eyes or give me a thumbs up? Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, just a note that next Monday, Memorial Day, the VFW is going to have a Memorial Day service at the VFW at 6 o'clock. It's not going to be like the normal that they used to have, but Charlie says they will be having some type of memorial service there. So whether it's going to be outside, inside, I don't know, but he said they will be having a service. And just to note that next month, our work session and our council meeting, we will be going back in person at the Union Bridge Town Office. So we're, thank goodness, we can go back to seeing people and having regular meetings again. Okay, um, we also have some business has to be taken care of tonight, and that is the a resolution for our town manager circuit rider that we have. It's a program they started back in 2017. It's DHCD, Department of Housing, and we have to renew this contract from time to time. Mike Reynolds is our person that we have. And originally, this contract started out, it was a program they started back in 2017. It's in 2017, cost us $750 a year for Mike's services as our town manager. This year, they've raised the prices. The first time they raised it is $1,250. And what we have, we have Mike, he is here two days a week, one week, the violent week, he's here three days, and we share him with New Windsor.
Perry, that's changed. He's here one week on, one week off. So Monday through Friday here, Monday through Friday, New Windsor.
I know we tried that the other year and they didn't want that, but that's good. They got to get a whole week at a time, so.
Requested that, so.
Yes, so I knew we've been trying that, so. We also will need a, for the resolution, we'll need a motion to approve the resolution that will be signed by the mayor and council that we agreed to the the resolution. Did everybody get a copy? Or do you want me to read it for you? Okay, we'll just go to the resolution real quick. Says the resolution for the town of Union Bridge authorizing the town to participate in the Maryland Circuit Rider Town Manager Program. Whereas the Office of Neighborhood Revitalization and Department of Housing and Community Development administers the Circuit Rider Town Manager Program for small municipalities for professional management services that they could, they could not do otherwise afford. Whereas objectives of the Circuit Rider Town Manager Program are to promote economic and community development through improved management and administration. And whereas the state of Maryland and Carroll County through the Maryland Rural Development Corporation offer a Circuit Rider Management, Manager Program to small municipalities and the county, and have offered a program to the town from past involvement. Whereas the town of Union Bridge has agreed to the Maryland Assurance and Compliance Act. And says, now therefore resolved, may it be town, mayor and town council, town, Union Bridge, Carroll County will enter into a Circuit Rider Town Manager Program, year 2022, beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30th, June 20, or 2022. So if there's, I'd like to have a motion to approve this resolution so we can move on and continue to have Mike working for us.
Make a motion, we approve this resolution as a circuit rider for Mike.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions to that? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, eyes, give me a eyes or thumbs up?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Okay, Perry, thank you. We'll get this signed tomorrow and get that back to him, Dawn. Okay, thank you. Okay. My sheet's here. Okay, next we have Circuit Rider memorandum of agreement, and that is basically the same type of thing that we have to sign. It's a memorandum of agreement, which I just read. Well, I didn't read that one, but it's basically the same thing, tells you the agreement for one year and what the cost is going to be. And these aren't numbered, so if the memorandum of agreement, has everybody got a copy of that in their paperwork, they should have. Okay, and it just verifies that the price is going to be $1,250 for this year. So I'd also like to have a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement so that we can get that signed.
And that we.
Okay. We have a motion. And a second.
I second it. I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion seconded by Edgar. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, eyes?
Aye.
All right, noes? Motion's carried. Thank you. We'll get that signed for tomorrow. Okay. Okay, now we're up to our attorney's report.
No, no, wait, we need the Maryland Assurance of Compliance for the Circuit Rider.
Okay, I don't have that one on here. Okay.
Yeah, it's not on your agenda. I put it on the bottom of the Circuit Rider.
Oh, okay.
Circuit Rider Funding Application.
Oh, okay, yeah, right on the bottom. My mistake. To reapply for the Circuit Rider Program with the annual fee increasing to $1,250, and the MOA between MDRC and the town of Union Bridge and the assurances agreement. So that's another motion that we need to get passed.
I make a motion that we reapply to the Circuit Rider Program with the annual fee increasing to $1,250, and authorizing the mayor and council to sign the resolution, the MOA between MRDC and the town and the assurances agreement.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? We need to get, hearing none. All those in favor, eyes?
I make the motion that we reapply to the Circuit Rider Program with the annual fee increasing to $1,250.
Okay, noes? Motion's carried. All right. Thank you, Dawn.
MRDC and the town and assurances agreement.
All right, now we'll go to the attorney's report. Okay, with Dawn. Motion and a second. Are there any questions? We need to get.
Mayor, I'm actually going to let John talk for a moment. He just wanted to update the council on the solar site plan. I know he has to run to another meeting, so I'll let him go first.
Thank you, Mandy, and good evening. I just wanted to just update the council to the extent you haven't heard that the Citizens UB Solar Project Site Plan was in fact approved, approved by the Carroll County Planning Commission on May the 18th. It now moves into the Public Works stage. Their attorneys have advised me that they're hoping to get that complete within 30 days. I think that's a little aggressive, but they're working on it. I'm working with Ned because there are some Public Works documents that may affect the eight acres that's already in town. So that will all go together as one package of documents, and then the archival quality plans will be submitted to the county, and when that's all in order, then our planning commission in Union Bridge has authorized Chairman Long to sign off on those plans. So what that also means is that we're getting closer to the annexation stage of the project. So I am in contact now, again, move into that process. And again, I apologize, I have to jump off. I'm due on a meeting for another client in the city of Westminster here in a few minutes, but I just wanted you to get the latest on the, on the solar project.
Thank you, John. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now we're back to Mandy.
Thank you. I wanted to go over the record retention and disposal policy. I did check with Comar, and our policy is up to date. The last change was in 2010. There have no, there have been no changes since. So if the council, if they, you know, if they don't have any changes they want to discuss, or they want to, any revisions they want to make, we can go ahead and approve the policy as it is.
Okay, does the council have any problem with appropriating this policy? Okay, Dawn, you don't have any questions on that, do you?
No, the policy works fine, and it's, it's perfect for us at this time. So I recommend that we go ahead and update it as is.
Okay. Okay, we have a recommendation to update. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion that we update the record retention policy as is.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, eyes or thumbs up?
Aye.
Okay, noes? Okay, motion's carried. We'll take care of that. Okay.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is just going over the memorandum of agreement between Carroll County and municipalities for the cost sharing of the stormwater mitigation projects and co-committee responsibilities in complying with the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System and municipal separate storm sewer system requirements. If you all remember, this was put into effect, I believe, back in October of 2014, and it was put into place so that essentially there was a countywide approach to the policies, procedures, and solution regarding the water resource development and protection plans. And also, it was part of cost sharing. So this, I think the original was in 2014, and this has now been updated for 2021. For tonight's purposes, I just wanted to go over some of the updates and the revisions to the 2014 agreement so that you're aware of it, and if you guys have any questions or any provisions that you want me to take back to the county, you can do so. They'll be meeting again in July, so we want to make sure that that's taken care of, which is why I wanted to present it at this time so that everybody could take it, take a look at it and go from there. Okay? Um, one of the biggest changes for the MOA was at this point, there is no end date. This is going to be essentially put in into an agreement for the municipalities until somebody or one of the municipalities agreed to terminate it. I believe in 2014, they agreed to do it until the later of the issuance of the fifth generation permit. But at this point, the stormwater mitigation projects are still needed in the county. So they want to make it essentially, it says, will be in perpetuity. So it's, it's going to be there until it's terminated by one or both or all parties. The next one is essentially going to be the annual payment. That is one of the biggest changes that's going to occur. It actually works out in our favor because right now for 2021, we have a payment of $14,027. For next year, it will actually decrease to $10,178. And then it will begin increasing again in 2023 at a 5% increase every year. So by the time we reach 2029, it'll be up to $14,321. And per the new changes of the MOA, it states that the amount of the initial annual payment for each municipality under this agreement shall be based on 35,000 per impervious acre determined using the county's geographic information system multiplied by 2%. That is a change from the 20%, which is why it has decreased. The total number of impervious acres required to be restored or mitigated by the permit cost and initial payment calculation shall be based on the following formula, which is 2% of the total untreated municipal impervious acreage times the cost per acre, and then minus the 80% county share. So that's how they come up with the 35,000. Going forward, one of the, the changes is that the actual calculation for the payments, if that change for the accounting measures, this agreement allows for the county and municipalities to renegotiate that agreement separately from the MOA. There is another change, which I believe Union Bridge has already put into place, but per this agreement, each municipality will develop a salt management plan in accordance with the permit, which I believe was done in 2019, so we should be good to go. And those were the major changes. A lot of it, I felt like they took, as I was reviewing it, reviewing the changes, I think they tried to condense a lot of the things that were one here, but those are the major changes that I wanted to make, make you aware of going forward. So that way, if any of you have any comments or problems or issues in the meantime between now and July, you can bring those up so that we can take those over to the county so that they're aware of them before this agreement actually goes into effect.
Yes, and the county does have a committee on this, and we meet every month discussing stormwater management and things like that. As you're aware, that probably in the next few months, they are, they will be, as soon as everything is finalized with the Bucky property, we will be getting, they will be starting on the stormwater management for Union Bridge. They did do some renovations to the one at Elmer Wolf School last summer that we got credits for. And the reason why some of the prices have gone down this year for everyone is that Carroll County has been, they've done number one, and as far as stormwater management throughout the state of Maryland. So they're way ahead of the game with everybody, and that's the reason why the prices is going down. If we would have had to do stormwater management on our own, we'd have been up into millions of dollars. So that's the reason why everybody went on this agreement way back in 2014 or 15. We had meetings for about two years before we came up to program. And so the county works on the grants and makes it more feasible for everyone. So they've done a great job for us. They come around, they also check down by the park area for stormwater management and runoff and everything, and give us a, a report monthly and tell us how the town's doing. So this is a great, great program for us, and we're hoping that we can have this agreement signed in July's meeting. We do have a, an updated meeting. We'll meet again this Wednesday, but that's something that we do every month, the 4th Wednesday of the month. So just to let you a little background on that. So.
I have nothing further.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we're down the line here. We are up to Deputy Calusi. Brian was here earlier. There he is. Okay, Brian, you're up.
Brian, we can't hear you.
Yeah. See, your microphone's on, but we're not, we're not hearing you. Okay, well, while you're working on that, we'll just jump ahead a little bit to public comments and concerns, and we'll come back to you, Brian. I know Sherri has something on public comments and concerns.
I do. I'm so excited. The annual duck derby was held this past Saturday. We sold out of ducks for the 11:30 duck launch, which was 520 ducks, which forced us to have a second duck launch at 7:00 PM. We ended up selling about 900 ducks. We pro, we have made a little over $5,000 for that project, and it was very well received, and people really, really had a good time. Each year, we try to add a little something extra. We added kids' games, and a lot of fun was had by everybody. It was a great day, great event.
Okay, very good event. Thank you. And you even saved the ducks this year, right?
Yes, well, we save the ducks every year, but we've got, we didn't lose any ducks.
It was easier this year to save.
They're collected, they're resting, resting up for the next one.
Okay, all right, we're back to Brian. Are you on now? Are you? You must be having some microphone trouble. I see your, your mic's on, but we don't hear anything. Okay, we'll go ahead and start committee reports in case you can get back on. Let's see, let's start with Amy.
Good evening, everyone. I did receive one phone call since our last meeting from our mayor. This past Tuesday evening, May 18, about 7:14 in the evening, and there was what was believed to be water running down Wareheim Alley. It was not. It was sewage. I immediately called Mike Zekman, and he came out immediately and fixed the problem, literally. So thank you for giving me that phone call, and thank you, Mike, for taking care of that, and that is it.
No problem. That's some of the things I see when I'm riding around town at nighttime. Okay, Laura.
All right, so I typed up my list for Dawn because I'm not sure she'll be able to keep up with everything I've done since our last meeting. So on May 13th, I met with the mayor and council at the playground, the community center, to discuss options for the POS funds, which was removing the, removing the mulch and replacing with a riverized mat. May 14th, I met with Ken Black to discuss knowing concerns. On May 14th, I also contacted RLS to discuss the knowing concerns. On May 19th, I checked the areas where we had the knowing concerns. I missed a call from RLS, but he asked me to text him, so I texted him with pictures of the areas that still needed attention. He called me, and we discussed the areas, and I will check the areas again on Wednesday, May 26. On May 19th, I also met with Ellen at Town Hall to discuss my new duties. On May 19th, I also attended the nuisance abatement conference as a second council member. On May 20th, I received a complaint from a resident regarding a knowing issue. I spoke with Dawn, and we decided to think about it independently and then discuss it again on Monday. On May 20th, I also attended the Carroll County Chapter MLL meeting at Flood Zone where I was voted in as chapter secretary. On May 24th, I met with Dawn to discuss the resident's knowing concern. I called the resident back, but it sounded like the answer, fax machine answered, and I could not leave a message. On May 24th, which is today also, I attended a follow-up nuisance abatement conference, and I was also sworn in today, and I received some new duties. And I also requested information for National Night Out, which seems to be happening in person this year, on Tuesday, August 3rd. And I also edited minutes and letters for the nuisance abatement conference. And I would also like to express my, is Ellen still here? There she is. My gratitude towards, to Ellen for her years of service on town council and for her friendship and help during. and for her friendship and help during my time in the town council and throughout her years here.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Laura. Okay, Donald. You're muted, Don. There you are.
Okay, I'd like to welcome your newly elected council people or ladies. You know, we do, Mayor's job is to serve the town and the community. This election was actually quite different. Every signs everywhere, and it was great. So everything went along fantastic, but Laura, I'm sorry you were witness to somebody coming by and shaking their heads and like they weren't going to vote for you. And if that was the point, I feel that was nasty and unnecessary. And I'm glad you were a bigger person and moved on. And Sherry, as a new person on the council, we're a busy team, and we all, and we work together and move forward to serve citizens and communities. And if anyone has called up, you can see our new utility building. Excuse me, is, is taking place, is being built. We have our, this side is on. We have some other stuff to do to it yet, and we're waiting for getting kefir or concrete for us for our floor. And down in our park, I will be taking down the swing from the tree. Plus, there is three boards that are cracked on it. I don't think anybody is going to get hurt, you know, get, get the boards replaced. So unfortunately, they are here as new. And it'll be installed with a three-inch pipe. So will be any, any question of any safety issues. And last and not least, I certainly want to thank Lehigh for their support in our projects, by donating a stone for our building, or a pipe for our swing. And Sherry, as you're coming on board, you will, you will learn that Lehigh fantastic helped us in town. They have always stood by us, and they helped in any way they can. So it's great to have them in our, great for them to have our back. So it's all a part of it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Edgar.
Okay, the roof's been, was replaced at the center. That's all we're done. The playground, we're working on the upgrade, but doing that. Some of our play equipment is going to have to be replaced, so we're working on a grant to do all that. Mike's, Mike's handling that for us. That's about all I have.
All right. Okay, Sherry, now I put you at a disadvantage because you're new. So if you have anything you might want to, you know, throw out there tonight, I mean, go right ahead.
Well, I just want to congratulate both Amy and Laura. I did reach out and texted and called both of them, and I'm looking forward to working with them. I'm, don't know a whole lot about anything, but I'm anxious to learn and just want to be a team player because it's all about teamwork.
Okay, thank you. I think that's something very important in Carroll County. I mean, we've always done that in Union Bridge, and like I said at the chapter meeting the other night, it's very unfortunate that now they want to put partisan, they want to make our town municipal elections partial. We've never done that before. I had a phone call several months ago by someone. They wanted to know what, what party my council people were at, and I says, I don't know. We've never done that before, and it's none of my business whether they're Republicans or Democrats. We don't do that in Union Bridge, and the Maryland Municipal League doesn't honor that. As being a president of the MML this year, we, you know, and I've said before, and everybody knows that, we go to Annapolis, we go inside that building, and the Ds and Rs are kept outside because we go in there and we fight, and we go to the legislature, fight for bills for what's good for one hundred fifty-seven municipalities and one point five million people that we represent within our municipalities. And as far as I'm concerned, the MML does a heck of a lot better job with the bills than what our state legislature do because all they want to do is down there and fight Ds and Rs against each other, and we don't do that as MML municipal employees. We all work together, and I hope we continue to work together. And I hope that we never, ever have a town council like Tonton Town has had in the past because that is going to upset me too. I haven't, and it ain't going to be good for anybody that be like that because I'm not going to put up with it, and I hope we never have that. We've never had it before. We always have our differences, you know, and we'll work things out, and I hope we continue to be that way because, you know, as far as I'm concerned, Union Bridge has, has always done very well with their municipal people. And you look at some of the others, they have differences, and the council's always fighting with each other, and we have people that don't speak to each other in some of these other councils, and you can't get things done that way. And we can continue to do that. The only thing I ask that, come up with a phone number that you can make sure that everybody has your phone number when it goes out in the newsletter. It's going to be put it on the little card down at the town office. It's going to be on the town website. So when somebody has problems with whatever department you have, you will get a comment call on that. Most of our council people and what we've done over the years, if somebody has a water and sewer problem, just like I did with Amy, I call Amy. Somebody has a trash problem, Sherry, you'll get that phone call. So you'll have to have a number available so they can call you. And every department, learn to know what every department those people have. So that's the person that's in charge of that department. We don't try to override or do their work for them. And the only other thing is we ask that, everybody, please try to come into the office at least two or three times a week and sign your paperwork, sign off on your bills and things, so that these bills can be paid on a timely manner. So, you know, our postal service still is not up to par yet, and a lot of the stuff comes in, it's late, and then they want to charge us a late charge because the bills aren't getting paid, and they're laying in Baltimore or in Texas somewhere in some post office before it ever gets to us. And so please stop by the office. You have a key, stop by the office two, three times a week. Sign your bills that, that comes to your department. They'll be in your box. Sign them. Put them back in the box so Dawn can get them the next day so we can get those taken care of. That's, that's a big thing that we have to do. And like I say, until the post office starts getting things delivered on a manly time, which I don't know whether that will ever happen or not in our lifetime, but we'll try to get them taken care of as soon as possible. And going back just a minute, Ellen, did you have anything? I didn't see your hand up earlier or anything. I didn't know if you had something or not. I'll see you there.
Yeah, Perry, just because Sherry wasn't around when this was happening. It was before she was sworn in. There was a trash issue with someone putting way too much trash out on Trash Day. That has been handled. And as far as MML goes, as long as the municipalities in Carroll County have all sent in their Banner City, Banner Town forms and the municipal government works item, then this will be the year that we have all eight municipalities receiving Banner City, Banner Town.
That's great. Good way for me to go out in June, or yeah, into June.
Sounded good.
Okay, okay. Brian, did you get on?
Can you hear me, Perry?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
All right. I had it downloaded on my cell phone, so here we go. Between the dates of March twenty-second through May twenty-third, the sheriff's office responded to ninety-seven calls for service within the town limits of Union Bridge. Out of those calls for service, only six required reports, which were the following. On April twentieth, at approximately three oh three PM, deputies responded to the unit block of South Farquhar Street regarding a mental health emergency. Upon arrival, it was learned that the victim was having suicidal thoughts and wished to be transported to the Carroll Hospital Center for a mental health evaluation. The victim was transported without incident, and case was closed. On May first, at approximately one forty-five PM, deputies responded to the one hundred block of East Thomas Street regarding assisting the fire department with a subject in cardiac arrest. The patient was later pronounced deceased after life-saving techniques had failed. No signs of foul play were observed, and case was closed. On May first, at approximately five fifty-five PM, deputies responded to the unit block of East Broadway Street regarding a mental health emergency. Upon arrival, it was learned that the victim was having suicidal thoughts and wished to be transported to the Carroll Hospital Center for a mental health evaluation. The victim was transported without incident, and the case was closed. On May thirteenth, at approximately twelve forty-three AM, deputies responded to the unit block of East Elgar Street regarding a domestic. Upon arrival, it was discovered that no domestic assault had occurred, rather a mental health emergency. The victim stated that they wished to harm themselves and wished to be transported to Carroll Hospital Center for an evaluation, which occurred without incident. Case was closed. On May fourteenth, at approximately twelve oh one PM, deputies responded to the unit block of North Farquhar Street in reference to a missing person. Investigation revealed that the subject left the location without informing family members, which caused them to become concerned. The subject was later located unharmed in Rehoboth Beach, Delaware. Case was closed. On May twenty-second, at approximately twelve fifty AM, deputies responded to the one hundred block of South Main Street regarding a disorderly subject at the location. Investigation revealed that the suspect became disorderly and other customers at the location, with other customers at the location, and was asked to leave. The suspect then exited the building, at which time they secured the exterior door from the outside using a block of wood. Once the employee was able to exit the building and advise the suspect to leave the property, a mutual assault occurred. The suspect was later identified, and charges are pending on that incident. All participants are innocent until proven guilty in the court of law. And I just want to thank Ellen for every, or for her dedicated service to the community during her time with the council, and I hope all the best to her during her future endeavors. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, one, one more thing I need a motion on. You guys probably getting tired of motions tonight, but our next work session meeting will be June the fourteenth at six thirty at the office. It will be a in-person meeting, and it's our work session, but I, we're going to be talking to our legal counsel that night for some advice. But that will be for legal counsel, so I'm asking for a motion to have a closed meeting that will not be open to the public. That will be closed for legal counsel.
Make a motion.
Go ahead, Donald. I'll make a motion. We have a closed meeting on June fourteenth at our work session for legal counsel.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Oh, we probably should state there that it's going, we should probably state what it's about, and it's according to our disorderly house and abatement committee. That's what, that's what it's going to be about. So, all right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, eyes?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, no's? Okay, motion's carried. Is that okay, Mandy? Everything set up for that day? All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Sorry.
Thank you very much. Okay, but our next, okay, I have that on here for our next council work session. Our next council meeting will be a week early due to the summer conference in Ocean City. And our next meeting, regular council meeting, will be June the twenty-first at seven PM at the town office. And like Edgar said, the community center roof has been completed. Kenny's working on the ceiling inside, and we're hoping in the next month or so we can go back to renting the community center out. So everything's moving back to normal.
I was thinking of the community center, Perry. The lines will be painted by then also. Kenny want to get that done in case we start renting, renting the building out.
Right. If nobody's been up there, the black topping looks very good. It looks great up there. And so new roof, and hopefully we can keep the varmints off the top of the roof now. We'll, we're moving right along. So does anyone else have anything for the council this evening, mayor and council?
I would just like to say, Sherry, I did not get a text or a phone call from you, so I hope you don't think that I was ignoring you, but I did not receive that. Just wanted you to know.
Everybody give, make sure Dawn gets a good phone number for you to have displayed. And you will be getting phone calls, and sometimes they're good ones, sometimes they're bad ones. And you will learn, like I have learned over the years, there's some places in Union Bridge that you do not frequent a lot because you have people that all they want to do is complain, and you tell them you have a council meeting, and where it's at, they never show up. And one thing that, you know, one thing that I've found out over the years, you do not sit in bars because all you get is complaints about what's going on in the town. Those people never come to a council meeting, and they never show. You go over there, and you have a sandwich or something like that. You never discuss politics and religion in a bar because that's one sure way to start an argument. So, so that's just little tidbits about what goes on around here in every other town. All right, so is there no further business here this evening? We're in line for adjournment.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, eyes? Thumbs up?
Aye.
Okay. Motion's carried, and thank everyone for being here tonight, and we will see you on, not before, June the fourteenth. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.